Let's come to order. The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Terry Hodges.
Our clear to the nation, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join us for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Co's say no, motion's adopted. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Discuss some of these Tuesday night, I believe. There's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Co's say no, motion's adopted. Number six.
Uh, introduction, introduction of a new principal, uh, Ms. Jaeger is here tonight and Ms. Jaeger's been assistant a long time, served the administration a long time, very well respected everywhere she's been. And she has been appointed the new principal at Daniel McKee Alternative School. And she's got some great ideas, I think she and Ms. Davenport have worked together to really facilitate some good change. And I'm excited about her being there, so congratulations, Ms. Jaeger. I know you don't want to say anything.
Well, welcome, we're excited about you taking over out there and thanks for coming tonight.
Mr. Gill, you continue to be a great judge of talent.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. Well, I want to say, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Mary Jo and I worked together many years at Oakland High School. Uh, I'm just delighted to see her have this opportunity, she was wonderful to work with, she worked as assistant principal for me. And as good as they come, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm just delighted she's got this opportunity, I don't know if she'll do great.
Okay, very good, uh, I don't see any visitors, so number eight.
Ms. Flaherty. Uh, Ms. Flaherty will give us some status updates and many projects going on across the county, in the schools.
We have, uh, a lot of this is for summer work that we completed. Uh, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, it's a lot of it. Um, floor covering, we hit several of the schools, Walter Hill, Riverdale, Smyrna West, uh, Smyrna Elementary. Just a long list of schools, probably twenty different schools we worked in this summer. Did a lot of interior painting. And, uh, one of the big things that we're trying to do is work through the Smyrna High School classrooms. Uh, since that job was built, there's been some peeling, painting on those walls in there. So we attacked that every summer and we're closing in on trying to get all those rooms, uh, redone. Uh, parking lot restriping, Smyrna High School. Um, and then we did various repairs and replacements around the county, such as signs. We, uh, repaired one of the high school pools, uh, uh, just done major window cleaning. Central Magnet School grease trap in septic is, uh, was one of the big things that was left off during the repair and renovations, uh, because we didn't have the funds, so we got that put in this summer. Smyrna High School roof, uh, replacement, the Cannon Elementary roof replacements around the cooler. Um, hi- Oakland High School track resurfacing, as you know, we've, uh, been on a program to redo those. We do one or two of those a year. Uh, several of those types of projects. Gymnasium floor maintenance, we also on a rotational basis on those where we, uh, try to do several of those a year. We, uh, screen them and re coat them, or if they've been done several times, then we refinish them. Also, uh, maintenance orders for July, we had approximately sixteen hundred turned in. We, uh, completed fourteen hundred and thirty-nine of them, we had a hundred and seventy-six in progress. And, uh, we hadn't started a hundred and five of those. And then, uh, behind that, uh, NG is just a list of major, uh, things that we, the maintenance department actually did. And then, uh, H, there's, uh, several projects there, of course, we relocated portables. Uh, we've worked on Stewart's Creek High School. We have designed and are looking at the Eagleville addition, Ketchikan Sewer, which you approved tonight. Uh, and the consented agenda, then we're working on Lescasse's sewer design. And then, uh, we're also working on the campus school final phase, which is to, uh, due to be complete by the end of next summer. And then, uh, we've, uh, done a little bit of an evaluation on Daniel McKee and we're, uh, moving in there to do some floor covering and some different projects at Daniel McKee to try to get that place, uh, in really good shape. And that's it, if you have any questions?
We've had a busy summer. That's a very impressive list there, Donald.
Uh, before G, all of that was contract work?
Um, before G, uh, a lot of it was, yes, most of it was, and that's on those bids. A lot of that comes off of the bids that we have that run from one to three years of renewable.
Do we have a maintenance painting crew now?
We have a crew of two people. And that is Marty and Robert, and we keep them very busy, particularly when we're moving, uh, portable. We go in and clean those up, paint the outsides of them, and those types of things. And we do small jobs with them, uh, because they're, it's so small a crew that we have to do things we can get in and get out of. We also have the Centin Tail Brothers on, uh, contract in here on bid, so we use those on, them on larger projects.
Wayne.
Sort of hallways and things like that in, in schools or do the school, the in-school people take care of that? Or do we, we, they sub it out depending on their cost?
It depends, if we have money and they're really in need, we try to help them. Uh, written in the contract for the custodians or has been in the job description, is anything under eight feet, custodian's responsible for, but when we get in gyms, cafeterias, or if it's just a massive area that we can help them with and we have money to do it, we try to help them all we can.
Sure.
Uh, first of all, I, I want to apologize for throwing you under the bus the other night. Secondly, uh, and I know this is true with the board too, I hear more positive comments about maintenance and the job you guys do, and I, you know, I'm real proud of what y'all do. And I know Kenneth Curley is due a lot of the credit for that, but I know the other day when, uh, hot water heater went out at Rockville, Mr. Johnson, the first day of school, I believe it was, first full day, which made it worse with serving a lunch and all that, but, uh, he called, you guys were immediately on it, had it fixed, uh, right away, and I remember his comment was, you know, vintage, the maintenance department, you know, they do stuff, they're, they're on it immediately, they get it done fast and, you know, there, there's, there was a time when it wasn't that way, so you guys do the good work.
Thank you.
I've been told by a principal before that they have to guy, they have to make sure they have time to get them in because if they call, they'll show up, so, uh,
Yeah.
They, uh, they have to be careful how quickly they call. That's a nice problem to have.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
You know, when we cut off light poles to match the other poles.
We're doing pretty good job. I didn't know we were doing that, are we doing that?
Number nine.
Uh, application for extended learning programs for two thousand eleven, twelve. Uh, extended contract application allocation for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year has been received. The state will fund extended contracts for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, using state funds. Rutherford County's allocation of two hundred and twenty-five thousand is identical to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand ten, two thousand eleven allocations. Extended contract committee is seeking approval to submit the application using the same program parameters that Rutherford County has been using for the past several years. Those parameters in priority order are, one, summer school, two, school year remediation intervention programs, three, school year enrichment programs, four, skills training for enhanced potential with Nissan. And the recommendation is that you approve Rutherford County Schools' extended learning programs application for two thousand eleven, twelve using the following parameters, one, summer school, two, school year remediation intervention programs, three, school year enrichment programs, four, uh, skills training for enhanced potential with Nissan, and five, outstanding performance.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Co's say no, motion's adopted. Number ten.
And let me say before reading this, uh, we discussed, uh, this issue this morning and there was some confusion with respect to what the board wanted. I know Mr. Jernigan had brought up maybe he liked it on the consent agenda, and I think Mr. Tackett may have said so too. We thought Mr. Holliday didn't think there was a need for that. Uh, and the kind of consensus was, we weren't real sure, uh, so what we put was, we went back to that original recommendation and I certainly have no issue with respect to what you do on this. The only two reasons, well, maybe, maybe we should discuss it when we get, uh, my motion. Uh, supplements for athletic summer work and supplemented volunteers. We are requesting board approval to allow the director's schools to authorize supplemental payment for athletic summer work, summer camp, supplemented volunteers, and other supplemental pay issues that may arise. This authorization will cover payments made through the school activity fund, booster club, and PTOs. This approval process will let us ensure that these payments are in accordance with Title IX gender equity rules and IRS rules for both employees and independent contractors. And we're, we're recommending that you authorize the director's schools to approve salary supplements that are not included in the supplemental schedule approved annually.
So moved.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We get a list or summary of this?
I gave you a summary right here.
Have I been, has, has change come about?
Oh, I'd be happy to do, and I don't, again, I don't feel strongly. I think the advantage to this would be, we have instant approval, I mean, I think that you trust the staff attorney, the resource director, yes, Sam McMichael, to do that. Secondly, it allows us to process payments much faster than waiting for the next board meeting. Uh, I mean, we're going to ensure that it's Title IX issues are adhered to. We'll always supply you with a list of who does that, but again, I mean, if you feel more comfortable taking the consent agenda, we're fine, but there was some, there was some considerable discussion on our part, really, what the board wanted. Uh, so, regardless of how you handle it, we're fine with it.
Tim.
I want to ask you a question, when, when we, uh, go, these people come through that are not already on our payroll, understand that people that are, that they're already under the rules and regs. But someone that's outside of our system, they come in and, and we go through this process and pay through our system, do we have any liabilities at all for what they do because they, they now are quasi employee of the system?
Well, we're going to think, well, first of all, Angel, come up here. I mean, we talked about some services we would require use facilities, which means they would have to provide liability insurance. And I think your question is primarily tied to band maybe, I may have got wrong.
Well, it'd be primarily, I think that might be where that happens more than anyone else.
We're, we're also going to require any volunteers, anybody associated with these programs from this point forward to be fingerprinted.
Right.
Uh, which gives us insight into, more insight into the person, but answer his question as best you can, Ms. Tackett.
Well, I mean, I think, I think the answer to that is that we do everything we can to limit any liability we might have. We, we do, for volunteer coaches, for example, we do the background checks, we do the fingerprinting. Um, and they make, they make application, we check recommendations, those kinds of things. Uh, we are now going to extend the background checks and fingerprinting to all volunteers for extracurricular activities. So, we will be doing everything we can to try to limit any exposure we might have liability wise. Of course, the potential is always,
Sure.
always present, but, but we do everything we can to limit it. Um, and, and we will, for those people, you know, obviously the payments will be flowing through the board education now so that we can monitor them, but the money will, will be coming directly from booster clubs, so it doesn't make them an employee in that sense, but...
I, I mean, I'm not smart enough to figure that out, so I, I know you guys are, I just wanted, wanted to ask you a question.
Donald.
This, uh, I, I would like to, uh, just get the board's feelings, so I'm going to, uh, just offer an amendment that, uh, any, anyone that receives supplemental pay through booster club organizations, our PTOs, uh, go through the due diligence, just like, uh, Mr. Gill was talking, but it be placed on the consent agenda, uh, with those names and their tasks, uh, when it's going to be performed, and, uh, the amount.
Yeah, let's see if there's a second to that.
I second.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, you want to say something?
And I, I just, we had a question come through this afternoon, and I hadn't thought of this possibility. Once in a while, we do have an hourly employee come through on this. A custodian or cafeteria worker who works for, say, a PTO fall festival or something. Those hourly employees, we need to pay within that pay cycle. We don't, you know, so, it is kind of a supplemental item, but that we would need to pay within the pay cycle. Or stop the practice. That, that's a wage and hour issue potentially.
What, let me ask it this way, the, it, it, this is going to be a known expense, I would think, prior to the payment having to be done, I mean, can not, can we not authorize, provided that the service is fulfilled, that the pay would be okay to go ahead and, and do that? In other, in other words, if, uh, we'll just take, uh, Mike Ammit, Band Camp at Riverdale. My guess is they're going to know he's going to do that beforehand, we can make that approval for that pay prior to him actually doing it, so that when it's already approved, if he fulfills that, he can go ahead and be paid. That's our, in other words, there's, there's not a two or three week delay in that, so the people can go ahead and get that authorized, but it's gone through the consent agenda that, provided they provide that service, they can go ahead and get paid, which should take care of what, I think, what you're saying.
As long as it is submitted and approved.
Yes.
Wayne.
What if, we continue to allow the director of schools to do this, but then we're notified for information purposes only, which, which happens a lot, and there, there are some, sometimes, I know, uh, we've had, in my time, we've had at least, I think, two Julias where we haven't met at all. And, uh, and some months where we only meet, you know, we may meet at the first of one month and meet at the end of the next, so, you know, so there isn't a gap in these people getting what they deserve. Maybe, maybe it's issued to us for an information purpose, but we still allow their director to go ahead and take care of it in a timely fashion.
You know, I actually had a call from the head football coaches today, who did summer work and who the boosters had committed payment to, and the principal said, well, we're not going to pay it now until it goes to the board education. I said, well, good news is we got a meeting tonight, their name's on that list. He said, well, I, I really need the money, how, how long, but before I get the money, I said, and I had called Jeff. I said, he's, Jeff said, we'll, we'll, if it's approved tonight, then we'll send it to courthouse tomorrow and you'll probably get a check next week. Uh, that would be the only concern of mine, is that it takes a while if we do have, if we don't have board meetings from one month to the next. But, you know, I guess you, some of you are probably thinking, well, that'll cause them to do, their due diligence and plan further ahead.
Well, I hope none of these people are relying on this to buy their groceries, I mean, you know, it's, I'm not sure that... Donald.
Well, that, that's what I was going to say, you know, uh, that this is a supplemental salary for something that, uh, in, in doing their job, uh, and so therefore their, their primary job is, is not working for the booster club or anything, so I, I don't think, uh, whenever they get it, they'll be proud to get it, uh, is my thinking, and, uh, so I, I understand that, uh, once a job is completed, handed over to them, but, uh, the anticipation of, uh, and planning for it down the road might be good too, for some of them, but, uh, and, and I'm not trying to belittle the fact that when work is done, it needs to be, uh, appreciated, uh, and oftentimes that is through, through pay, pay, but, and, you know, I, I don't think Mr. Gill was going to do anything, uh, and let people walk over and get big salaries or anything like that from the booster club. But one of the things that I was concerned about was that through this process, the question, did you know? Came up, and a lot of things, I didn't know, till, and, and in fairness, uh, a lot of other people didn't know either.
Yeah, clearly. There's a lot of that going on.
So, I was looking at this as simple pay. This is a simple way to provide and say, the information is provided for us, we might not know it, but it would be our fault. And so therefore, that's the reason I've taken this.
Tim.
I, I, I would, I'd ask Mr. Jernigan if he might amend his amendment to be more in line with what Wayne's saying as an informational purpose, I, that's what I'm interested in seeing, and I, you know, I don't know that we're, I, I don't know if I have to be in the approval business, but I do think that I'd like to see it on the agenda at some point in time, and I would be, I'd be amenable to that.
So in other words, if, if, if we pass a supplement down here, we reflect it on the next agenda?
That's, I think that's what Wayne's saying.
Yeah, just for informational purposes. But you could go ahead and do what you do and for it to be moved along in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I would have...
Karen.
Is there a T double S double A requirement that we're staying in line with when we do background checks on volunteer coaches versus having not done background checks and, and that type of review on, uh, on extracurricular volunteers of, of other activities?
I don't think, Angel, they get into mandating background checks on volunteer coaches, do they?
They don't specifically mandate the background checks, but we even did our process because we were doing it like an application process that had to be presented to the board. We just decided to do all of that at one time, uh, just like we do with employee.
And with the volunteer coaches or those volunteers, is that at, uh, their expense or board expense, or how does that work out?
Booster club is clear.
Booster club covers, okay. I, I just, I hesitate to add additional expenses to those other booster clubs, uh, for that, uh, type of, of background check and everything, for, for instance, somebody that comes in for a week of band camp, you know, or something like that, uh, their interaction is not for three or four, five months of the year, or something like that, like the athletic situation. And, and it is a little bit of a different circumstance, but at the same time, if the T double S double A is not requiring that and it's really just, you know, what's the difference between that volunteer versus some other volunteer in interaction with the students? Uh, so I'm, I'm still, I'm still chewing on that, uh, that part of you of a process.
I, I think the short answer to that is, they wouldn't be the one paying the liability if, if you were sued, you know?
Right.
It would be our responsibility. Uh, we met with the band instructors, uh, directors and the principals the other day, I mean, I think, Angel, didn't you feel like there was a kind of a consensus that we, we would do, that they were in favor of doing background checks on, since there were a limited number, a background check or fingerprint check costs what, uh, forty-eight dollars? I think the forty-four dollars, I mean, I think the cost, the value of, of doing it would outweigh the cost.
Okay.
I was going to let Donald respond to, um, if you have one. Or sir, do you have a response to Mr. Tackett's request?
Well...
You don't have to. You just ignore him.
In, in light of what I have seen in the past, uh, uh, I would be hesitant to amend the amendment.
If, uh, Mr. Jernigan's amendment doesn't pass, I'd be, I'd be willing to add the point of giving us the information only in the consent agenda. So, you know, the director of schools would still have the authority to move the process along, but we would still be notified through the consent agenda, so that, if that doesn't pass out, that, that would be my amendment.
No, I'm sort of like Mr. Gill, I don't feel that strongly about this, but I guess I just think, given the con- level of controversy we've had over the last, I don't know how long it's been, months on this issue, I'd rather us go maybe a step farther than we have to go and approve something, uh, like this. I guess I'd, I would probably vote in, oh, probably, I will vote in favor of Donald's amendment, but it's no reflection on the judgment of anybody down here.
Is there any reason to draw a distinction, again, between, uh, Rutherford County employees and people that we don't have any other, uh, employment relationship with other than this supplemental? Uh, as far as, you know, how we approve, because what T double S double A has got a problem with, what, you know, what there is some controversy in the public's eye is an additional payment over and above the salary that taxpayers are already, you know, putting in place for that Rutherford County employee. And so if that were a possibility to, you know, because Rutherford County employee, they're getting, they're getting a paycheck. These other people, I know in, particularly in band situations, or maybe even in some of these athletic situations, these may be, uh, college students that are off for summer or something like that, that are coming in and just, you know, kicking a, a week of band camp or something like that, and they're gone again.
Want to answer that, Angel?
Are, are you asking with respect to the fingerprinting or with respect to the supplementing?
The supplementing. The, the fingerprinting, I'm, I'm, I'm getting comfortable with, everybody needs to get the background check because that's just good, good nature, uh, you know, good, good judgment. But how we pay those folks and, and the level at which we monitor it, I, I kind of see a reason for distinction between somebody who is our standing employee versus somebody who's just coming in with this specific service.
Well, I mean, I think specifically in talking about band camp, uh, you're not going to see that as a sup- as come to you as an approval for supplement, because those contracts are entered in directly between the booster club and the people who are doing the band camp, so it's not a, it, it wouldn't be seen as a supplement because it's for a specific amount of time, paid directly by the booster club, um, for summer programming, not for anything during the school, uh, school year. Um, so we've made a distinction in those kinds of things. Um, and those folks go through a process similar to the facility use process where there are insurance requirements and those kinds of things, so that, that wouldn't be something that you would see come as a supplement.
But Angel, when we drew the distinction, it's kind of refreshed my memory, that if, if they're affiliated with T double S double A program, for example, a volunteer, somebody volunteered, if they choose to pay them, we're not saying that they can't, but we would run that through our books.
Right.
All right, what's the difference between that and, and there's somebody with the band, affiliated with the band that comes in and volunteers, that the boosters are allowed to pay them directly and use a ten ninety-nine? Isn't that what we said?
Uh, the, the difference, I think, in terms of us keeping the records on it are, first of all, those volunteer coaches are approved through this process anyway, um, and so the, to add the additional requirements for the approval process is not, not a difficult one, it's simply another notch on the application. Plus, from Jeff's perspective, in terms of accounting and record keeping, um, making sure that ten ninety-nines are issued to those people, uh, appropriately, he felt like it was better for it to run through payroll and go through the same processes we were using for employee purposes. I think the big distinction is that, what we found when we met with the band groups is that they're, they're using similar people on a regular basis, so their relationships with them are ongoing, and they have a fairly good handle on how their record keeping is done, and how their budgeting is done. With coaches in terms of sports and supplementing, there is more come and go. Um, we have already been privy to information that shows that the record keeping has not been what it was supposed to be, so in an effort to improve that whole system, this was just part of that process.
Okay, I'm getting more confused rather than less. I thought, I thought the goal of this was any supplements, any payments from booster clubs would be reported... I thought, I thought the goal of this was any supplements, any payments from booster clubs would be reported through this process, but I, I think I'm hearing you say, no, that's not correct.
Well, the only distinction that we have made to, to not call a supplement is specifically for band camp. None of those people are employees, obviously. They're brought in to do that two-week or ten-day, um, period during the summertime.
Right.
The booster club is entering into a contract with them directly to provide that service. So, there is no, a volunteer coach for football or basketball does not inter- enter into a contract with the booster club directly to provide a service.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're coming to the school on a daily basis, football practice or basketball practice on a regular, ongoing basis. That is a contractual agreement between the booster club and those individuals, um, and they are issuing ten ninety-nines and have a hi- a history of doing that.
And so, say a drum instructor comes to band camp, we, that payment would not flow through this process?
No.
Tim.
Well, let's say that same drum instructor, there's something called winter guard that bands do, that, that is during the school year and, and lasts months, and outside people do come in. That same drum instructor that, that instructed in the summertime, they may be instructing during the school year, ongoing, weeks at least, months at a time, to do that?
That would be a supplement, that you would see.
That's, okay.
Because that person would not be, my distinction in my mind is they're not entering into a contract directly with the booster club to provide that service. That is something that the band director or the drum corps person or the, uh, you know, is coordinating for them to come in and do. And my, you tell me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but my understanding is band camp operates completely different. Uh, it's a different process. They do contractual agreements for a ten-day period, and those payments flow directly from booster clubs, um, and, and have not been an issue. So, we, we did.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make an issue there. I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to hear if it's two weeks or less, they're one, if they're, if it's longer than a two-week period, I mean, is there, is there a set number that says this drum instructor that instructs only during band camp versus the one who does the winter guard for months at a time during the school year? I mean, where is the, where is the line of demarcation that would say, it's this or it's this?
The only distinction we have made thus far is, is to separate band camp from everything else.
Okay.
That's it.
And the ten ninety-nine issues, T double S double A, those ten ninety-nines are want issued through county accounts pay of the system. It's easier to track, make conservative lines on Title IX issues.
Wayne?
I hope I'm not getting this way off track, but, uh, football team, basketball team, any team, they go away for a camp. They go off campus to, for, and the booster club is paying for this camp. So, is, do they write the check directly to them, or are we saying that we want that to come through us too?
I don't, I don't think we've ever sent it.
Okay, I didn't pay, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so that's just a check written to them.
Right.
For their service.
Right.
Okay.
Donald.
I thought, in the explanation, at least what I went away with was that the booster club was going to be required to turn in an expense account to the principal of the school. All of their expenditures were going to be on that expense account. And then that expense account came to you and you re- or your office reviewed it.
When I add staff, yes, sir.
And, uh, so why wouldn't all of that show up on that?
Well, one of the concerns we have, because of, the booster clubs are only required to keep their records for four years under law. If we go through the audit on Title IX issues, I want to clearly be able to support, okay, here's what we did for softball, here's what we did for baseball, not relying on going back to booster club records, that.
I think they would show up, that's.
What is the amount that has to be paid to, a ten ninety-nine is required?
Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars. So, if there is any pay less than six hundred dollars, a ten ninety-nine is not required.
But we would be making it, we would have records that had been made.
But, but, that's what I think, but a record would be, a paper trail would be from that booster club through the principal to your office. And you might be sure to help, but it's still going to be the near office.
It still would be, that the analysis part is what I don't have the staff. We would be auditing the booster clubs, and it would take probably, it would take two people.
Yeah, maybe booster clubs and.
Other questions? So, let me ask this one more time. Sorry for being dense. This process is gonna capture payments made other than in these cases where you're talking about like a short, other than band camp, essentially.
Right.
Any additional payment to a coach or to a volunteer, or employee or non-employee, doesn't matter?
Right.
So, the motion we have on the floor is to amend this motion to, uh, state that the board will approve those payments on the consent agenda. Everybody clear on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no?
No.
Is there just one no? I, I don't think we need a roll call. One, she'd like one. Okay, so the motion's adopted. So now we're on the, um, the original motion is amended.
Hang on, Jeff. Jeff, what?
Is he, oh, I'm sorry.
I think he wanted to say something in connection with this.
Are you excluding payments to hourly staff from this?
I don't think that was part of anything.
Well, then I cannot pay them in guidance, in, along federal wage and hour guidelines on a timely basis, if I have to bring it all back to y'all. If, unless, you know, it's, okay, you have your prior approval, and yes, a, a lot of that will come in, but if it doesn't come in, then we.
Give, give them an example of, of what you're talking about.
Is there anyone other than janitorial staff that's affected?
Cafeteria staff, uh, potentially other staff could be affected.
Why don't we just add?
Are, are they all classified?
Yes, mhm, but becau- since they are hourly classified, they need to be paid that, for that additional task.
It might be appropriate to offer an amendment to allow executive committee approval for classified staff, which would be in keeping, it, it would be, it would be complicated, but it would be in keeping with Mr. Jernigan's desire, and yet, at the same time.
Either that, or we could just exempt the hourly employees. Don, uh, Donald.
Um, well, the custodial staff, a lot of that pay, uh, ninety-nine percent of it is going to be, additional pay is going to be on a facility use approval, right?
Not, not if it's gone, gone through, uh, a sporting event. Some of it would be on facilities use, but we do have it's, uh, sporting events, uh, the PTO, fall festival.
Are you, so you're talking about if the principal, uh, says to the lead custodian, I'll give you seventy-five dollars to clean up the gym after every basketball break?
Mhm.
Well, that seems like that would be simple enough to get approval, uh, right through there, that I'm going to, uh, employ two custodians to clean the gym at this amount for the entire year.
So, we don't, you don't need names, you just need some kind of cart blank?
Uh, we will request that and.
Tim. I go back to what I said before, is, is it not possible for us to, to, to get a principal's signature that, that says that this person's been pre-approved by, you know, we've gone through the consent agenda, and he's completed that task that has already been approved, and they can go and get paid?
I think you need to amend your vote to give us that authority of leave.
Yeah, well, we, we, we need to add an amendment of some sort, it sounds like, or Donald, you're saying you don't think you do?
I wouldn't like, we wouldn't need an amendment. I mean, you don't, you know how you're going to get your gym cleaned, you don't know how you're going to get your stadium cleaned. You don't do that game by game.
You don't do it game by game, but you're telling us you want to approve expenditures to employees, which includes any employee associated with the school system. So, I take that to mean, we've gotta submit on the, uh, consent agenda, uh, custodian Harry Gill, Mark Burns has cleaned the, uh, cleaned the gym for three times, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, y'all gotta approve it. I mean, otherwise, are you saying that we can just say, okay, principals, you guys got the authority to hire two or three custodians, however many you choose, clean the gym, clean the football field, clean up after fall festival? I think that's the distinction that you're trying to make, isn't it?
Right, yeah, we, we do not, i- in an ideal world, we would always know who's going to do it. We won't always know who's going to do it before the event, because.
But in retrospect, that's not really a supplement anyway. We were talking about supplements.
But if the booster club or sporting or PTO is reimbursing us for it, are y'all considering it a supplement?
I, I would.
I would think, I, I can, I wouldn't think it'd be a supplement if it's an employee. I wouldn't think we'd have to approve that.
If the PTO or the booster club does it, but if the, if the principal takes it out of the, uh, gate receipts that are in the athletic funds that did not go through that.
Well, you gotta go through it though, it's gotta run through us.
It doesn't have, yeah, it doesn't have to go through the booster club.
Right. Well, let me ask you this, uh, I mean, we don't wanna get our hands slapped or be chastised for that. Um, do we, everybody's okay with us determining what a supplement is and, and, and cases where a custodian or a principal, or a principal, uh, determines that a, you know, they need cleanup crews, they need this, the other? It's not really, it's not related to what we're talking about. So, we'll, we'll just, we'll deal with that, and if it's something that's on the fence post, so to speak, we'll just update them on those issues too. So, it's.
Let's don't make this any more complicated than we have to, although we might already.
Last thing I wanna do is tie the hands of principals, you know, to get, get done what needs to get done. I mean, that's, that's for sure.
Karen.
As we're now looking at the, uh, the amended motion, the director has done a great job in giving us a, a description of what are pending supplements, and yet, I'm still a little confused on the band camp thing, because there are a number of band camp supplements listed here that are non-Rutherford County employees. Are those coming through Rutherford County, or are they not, because they're on this list?
I did not look those up on payroll. My, I was thinking these were all employees from the form they came in to us on.
Okay.
I think these are all employees.
First two are, I don't know the rest, I haven't.
Everybody on this sheet's an employee, right?
I, I believe so. I've got the sheets here, so.
And in all instances, if it's an employee, it has to be run through us.
I'd agree with that, I just.
Okay.
Are we all happy? We're gonna vote, I just wanna make sure we're all happy before we vote.
Just, and so, so you clarify where we are on that hourly employee. I, I, if, if, if we feel comfortable that we can let that run through, I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, obviously, we don't wanna do anything that will get us in trouble with the federal government. But Jeff is the one who'd take the fall, right?
Right.
So, maybe we're willing to risk it after all that. Uh, Donald, you, we did leave that a little vague, so we're gonna say if it's an hourly employee, you're gonna do what you need to do and, uh, not necessarily wait on board approval. I believe that's what I heard, the consensus.
Yeah, I think that's what is your head.
You okay with that, Donald? Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of our intention is to make your jobs more complicated.
Yes.
It's to avoid another flare-up like we had, uh, earlier this summer. So now is everybody happy? You okay with the mo- you understand the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion's adopted. Number eleven. Yep. Take your time. You don't have an eleven?
Rutherford County Executive, Executive Committee meeting, uh, the Rutherford County Executive Committee had an emergency meeting on August second, two thousand and eleven, and approved the emergency purchase of one, of one compressor for Laverne Middle School and one compressor for Segal Middle School. The bid was awarded to McQuay with a bid of twenty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for each compressor to be funded, uh, from the maintenance department funds.
Okay, in general discussion.
No, go ahead, Wayne, I, I.
No, go ahead, Mr.
I just need connection with, uh, what we just approved. I'm gonna, anytime we make any kind of payment that doesn't go on the consent agenda, we're gonna copy Dr. Burns at an email, so he's aware, and if he thinks it's something that needs to come.
That's a good idea.
Back on the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, that way you'll be in the loop on that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right.
Dr. Burns, um, I've supplied a report from the TSBA Summer Law Institute where some of us were in attendance, and just in keeping with policy, uh, one of that entered into the minutes.
Okay, thank you for that report. Wayne?
Um, the newspaper, uh, report about ACT scores across Tennessee being down, was that regional? Or was that, was that statewide? Do, do you know?
Uh, it was statewide, it's down, most systems are down. Uh, we're still above the state average. Uh, Donald, Mr. Odom and I talked today again about it a little bit. You know, we, we'd like to be higher, obviously, I don't, I don't what to say, I mean, we kind of got a solution. Uh, we probably need to get more kids in honors classes, and they would certainly test out better. Same time, I'm not too sure, Donald, we were talking that maybe the seventh period day might hurt too. You know, it's, uh, the state is despite trying to add rigor, might have hurt it, shot itself in the foot.
I mean, that's what's puzzling here, we've gone through years of this, we're gonna be more rigorous, we're gonna test more thoroughly, and this independent national assessment we have reflects us doing more poorly.
Well, everybody's focused on AYP.
Yeah, well, right. Well, I'm just saying.
People would contract to the basic when you're facing that, so, I don't know.
Um, it's a good, I don't think we're gonna solve that one, but that, that was a good question, a good thing for us to keep in, keep in mind. Of course, we also, we, we, Tennessee tests everybody too, right?
Yeah, that's true, we test everybody.
Other discussion.
And, and given that we're the highest ESL population, and the third highest in the state, that's, that's a challenge for us too. But at any rate, uh, still well above state average. Uh, we're down to seventy-two students as of today that didn't have, hadn't turned in their shot ring. We got a hundred of them between yesterday and today, so, we're working on it.
Other discussion.
Tim.
Just going back to the ACT and whatever, just maybe some historical discussions that the board has had concerning weighted scores for, uh, honors and advanced honors classes. Talk, what prompted that with me was the idea of trying to get more people in, and I think that's the, from my standpoint, that's the one thing that I think that you're gonna have to, have to find a way to give incentive for someone to take an honors class. Uh, it was, it was very frustrating to me to see, especially seniors, running from honors classes or advanced honors classes to the standard class, when, uh, when they were just trying to protect their, uh, GPA. And, uh, that's, so, I, I'm just looking, I guess, from historical background of where we are with that.
Let me get, ask Mr. Gill, uh, cause I thought we were doing that, and he's telling me now that.
We had a state, that became a statewide issue, with specific colleges and universities, uh, recognizing kids for scholarships, awards, et cetera, and the state, what, three or four years ago, came up with, uh, some kind of formula whereby, uh, they awarded points per.
Three points for honors, five.
Three for honors, five for AP.
But no weight.
That's right, and, and you know, I'm like you, Mr. Tackett, I really wish we'd have moved towards a weighted grade point average, because there's so many people out there that don't wanna wreck their grade point average. Uh, you know, personally, I'd rather have my child with a three-point-seven, h- having taken all the advanced placement courses and the, and the toughest honors course, than have a four-pointed going through regular A classes. But, uh. But, uh, the state, the universities recognize that grade point average, and I think that also stymies, you know, student interest in taking tougher courses too. I mean, again, try to do something good, and you essentially want to, working against you.
Lottery scholarship tied to GPA as well. Wayne.
I feel compelled to explain my no vote, loan that you'll go to get stuff, Mr. Jernigan. Then, I've always been concerned about boards micromanaging. And, uh, so I don't think that's a huge deal right now, but I just wanna make sure that I stay consistent, because this board has a lot of responsibilities. But, you know, we're not, we're not supposed to make every decision on everything that goes across this county. That is the CEO's job, or the director of schools. So, that's why I voted that way, just because, you know, sometimes I feel like we can be micromanaging if we're not careful, so, nothing adversarial, just.
Well, if it's any, if it's comforting, I had a silent no vote too.
Well, we're all touched by the bond that you two have developed here. Uh, thank you, Joyce. I don't know that that was explicit, was it?
What's that?
Did we? Um, why don't we do it, just to be on the safe side? Thank you for reminding me of that, Joyce. In all the discussion, I'm not sure we ever explicitly said that we were approving this particular list. So.
When do we approve this specific list?
Excellent.
Second.
I hope there's no discussion, but if there is, now's the time. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion's adopted. Next Wednesday at five o'clock, we'll have a special call meeting on the, uh, open, voting bids for Stewart's Creek. So that'll give, uh, our folks here time to make sure the bids are in order, um, to mark the calendars. Anything else?
Yes.
Yeah, Donald.
Mr. Blair brought up an interesting point, and since Jeff, both Jeffs are here, uh, apparently he, he would clarify the responsibility the board has when it comes to approval of expenditures of the school system. The executive committee has to go in session to do certain things, the board has to approve, uh, we, we are responsible to approve all salaries, is that correct?
Basically, they're approved with salary schedules, and then the indexes, the various supplement lines that y'all have approved.
And by an index, that's a supplement?
Well, and, and, say for an assistant principal.
For a football coach.
Oh, yeah, the s- I'm sorry. Yeah, index would not be termed a supplement, uh, whatever, in this sense, but yeah, the coaching supplements, band, other extracurricular activities have been approved by the board, as that structure is growing.
If they're an employee, and they receive a check, or they do contract work for, uh, the Rutherford County school system, some way this board has approved that payment.
Or through that budget in that expenditure line, I don't know. If the expenditure is in accordance with.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so we will see you Wednesday night at five. With that, we are adjourned.